Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for this beautiful weather. We thank you for the last, hopefully the last bit of cold snap we're gonna have here in Montgomery County, so we can start planting our flowers in our gardens. Lord, we just thank you because you're the reason for all our blessings and everything that's good in this world. Lord, just gonna ask you to be with us today as we make decisions and help us to remind us that we're gonna make decisions in the best interest of all of Montgomery County. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Good morning. Today, we will hear from our county attorney, Michael Armstead, county engineer George Speak, attorney Susan Kennedy with Levitate Legal is here to discuss several ARPA items. Deputy Administrator Kendall Anderson will also provide some ARPA information. Ms. Kelly Benson with Baptist Health and Dr. Antonio Siedel will be here to present information about live free and hospital violence prevention. Items to be considered during the formal session is amendment number one to a contract with Montgomery Armored Car Service for armored car services for tax and audit and probate. Consider an agreement with Alabama Department of Transportation for funding for resurfacing Mount Zion Road from Paul Gibson Road to Woodley Road. Consider an agreement with Tyler Technologies to upgrade the financial software and expand enterprise resource planning system. Consider an employee cost of living adjustment. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Before we move forward, I just have a couple of questions about that Tyler Technology. When will we be prepared to actually go live with that? It seems like after reading that contract last night, there were a lot of preparation that has to take place. So when will we actually be prepared to go live with the transition into that particular?
When we did the last New World project, we kicked that product out in September, the fall, the June. So it was just over six months transition. I don't think it would be that long, but it is a process. It all changes every now and then.
How many departments will actually be utilizing that software within county government? Do we?
Every department.
Every department?
Almost every department.
Okay. And one last question in terms of cybersecurity. Are we, is that incorporated into that particular software or do we have to have our own?
I think we still have our own ones here, I think, but it also has a cloud posting of our, if we don't have them out, I think it will be increased.
Yeah, it will have all the cybersecurity issues, lots of it.
And all of that is included in the price that we're paying?
And back to Terry.
Okay, thank you.
Miscellaneous appropriations to agencies, are there any additions? Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education. Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue.
Yes, after, no individuals. We do have a few on here still. Hands-on region, 2-1-1 helpline and volunteer management program. Last year, we did 5,000 from the joint and Walker 2,500 each. I don't recall. You recall, Rhonda, did you do 2,500 then we did 2,500 from the joint? Do you remember that?
I don't recall, but I've always, I've often times held them out so that it doesn't surprise me that I did extra.
But I don't remember exactly how it.
Commissioner.
Who are they that do the deal?
It's in here. They do the volunteer of the year awards.
The, you know, Chairman, I think it would be great if we invited them to come and speak to us. It's been a while since they've been here. The, kind of the inception of that group, they coordinated volunteers in Montgomery County. And so if you wanted to be a volunteer, you would connect with them and they would ask you, you know, what are your knowledge, skills, and abilities? And then if an organization had a need, they would call Hands-on River Region and Hands-on River Region would be able to produce a list. Here are some volunteers that you can call or we can contact, however it works. Great, great, great concept. I would like an update from them to see how it's going and how we can be helpful because that is something that we get asked about a lot and it's a definite need for connecting volunteers.
So that's what you donate the money for, for them to produce a list?
No, no.
It's more sophisticated than that.
Let me give an example.
Okay.
I think Donnie used to serve on this board, if I'm not mistaken. Donnie Mims, our last administrator, served on this board. About five, maybe five years ago, I had one of my constituents home to be robbed right at Christmas time and they had kids and everybody and Christmas was just completely stolen. And Donnie gave me the name of the director over, I forget her name now, at Hands Over and I called them and they had Christmas. I mean, they went in, they had Walmart gift cards, they had bikes, I mean, they knew how to put all that together and these, this family had Christmas because of Hands Over and I've been a big supporter ever since.
Yeah, and I've had a similar experience. It's a great, but I haven't talked to them in a while.
It has been a while and it would be good for them to come and let us know. But they really, they really, it's, there's an organization for us to know if we get those kind of calls, you can call them and they'll know how to help them.
So maybe we need to have them come in and give us an update?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that. Actually, about 20 years ago, I was a volunteer of the year. I forgot about that.
20 years ago?
It's been about 20 years ago.
And Florence, you can just determine, you know, based on our agendas, when is a good time? It's not emergent.
Well, let's go, may I propose that we go ahead and do 5,000 from the joint now?
Yes.
Is that okay with everybody?
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, Florence, let's do 5,000 from the joint. Then they can come in and give us the update whenever they want to do it. Next one is the Troy University Rosa Parks Museum for the June 10th celebration. We've done that two of the past. We did it in 2019 and then we have done it in '22 and '23. We've done 5,000, they requested six. I would recommend we do 5,000 again this year as we had in the past.
And I'll, I'll do the other 1,000 from my designated, unless I can get some help on it.
And that's gonna be the?
I've already gotten the call on it, so I want to help them. I'll do the other 1,000, make it six.
Okay. And then one last one that, one of our commissioners has been nominated for Hot Dogs and Heroes this year, Rhonda Walker. I know Commissioner Sankey was a hot dog last year.
A hot dog hero.
A hero.
He was not a hot dog.
Thank you.
But he is a hot dog.
That was a hot dog year before that. Sheriff Cunningham, he's still a hot dog, lifetime hot dog, but.
Y'all liking them hot dogs.
But we have done, I don't see it on here. Teresa, do you remember?
I don't see the request from them.
They have called and I know with Rhonda being nominated, when is that event, Rhonda?
The event is that first Thursday night in May.
Okay.
And their request is 25,000. It is May 2nd.
For some reason, did we do?
Nothing. We did nothing last year.
We did something because I.
You did something, yeah. The joint didn't do anything.
We didn't do anything joint-wise?
No.
Teresa, can you look that up for us, let us know what we done last year and we'll talk about it next meeting?
And you're right, we didn't do anything jointly.
I think you and a couple of individuals gave last.
Ma'am?
For the next meeting, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, but yeah, yes, please do and let us know the, giving history the past few years.
That's all I've got, I think, on the joint, that's it.
Then we will consider travel training requests for the county commission and the sheriff's Michael, you are going to discuss items one and two.
Good morning. Item number one, in July of 2004, the county commission established the Montgomery Industrial Park. And when they did that, they established covenants and restrictions at the industrial park. These covenants and restrictions expire in July of this year, so that's 20 years from the date of inception. This amendment that's been presented to you will extend the covenants and restrictions for an additional 10 years at the industrial park.
I think we're, I think NIM has, what, one property left out there that's not one lot in the industrial park and been developed yet? Two, NIM has two. I believe the county still has one, is that correct?
County has about 120 acres.
Ma'am?
The county has about 120 acres.
No, I'm talking about lots, so just, but that's about 120 acres that could be developed in Montgomery.
It's kind of, kind of slowed down. You have something once a year, at least out there.
Yeah, we're running out of lots, property, so.
That's next agenda for us, officer.
Next agenda, you need to waive rules, Mike? No, no, no.
We got time.
We're talking about the Montgomery Industrial Park, just the covenants, renewing the covenants for 10 more years.
Is that pretty straightforward? There's nothing out of the ordinary?
What it does is, you know, you've got covenants out there that restrict what you can put there, how you got to keep up your property, and this just extends it for another 10 years.
Yeah. We'll be doing it until we sell everything, right?
Yes, to some extent, yeah.
So that'd be next agenda, Florence, please.
Okay. The next one is number two. In January of 2020, the county commission entered into a purchase and sale agreement for three lots at the industrial park. Excuse me, let me get this right. In the purchase and sale agreement, there were some waivers from the commission to the purchaser. These waivers were not included in the deed for some reason, I don't know exactly why, but they were not included into the deed. And this declaration that's in front of you will make official the waivers that were found in the purchase and sale agreement. Specifically, it will waive the requirement for them to develop a spec building within 180 days and waive the recapture clause. Those are the two items that it will waive.
I beg to remember that. When was that?
July of 2020. Oh, excuse me, January of 2020.
You said they were left out of the original agreement?
They're in the agreement, but they're not in the deed.
The deed. And Ms. Smith is here from Capell and Howard, if anybody has any questions that she might be able to answer.
It's the deed.
Was that for premier tech? Was that for the premier tech?
I think it was for IP, industrial partners.
Industrial partners.
Was that one of the NIM's projects? That was one of NIM's, right?
Yes, sir.
He had that request and he had another request that he didn't get, so I think I remember that. I don't have a problem with it.
Any questions for anybody? I know Industrial Partners celebrating their 50th anniversary coming up, so that'd be next agenda.
George Speak is here to present items three and four, if you have any questions.
Any questions for either one of these?
Yeah, item three is funding agreement for the multi-use trail, Elton Dean Park. It's a, it says TAP agreement, it's the total cost is 274,000 and the county's match is 54,000, 974.
And then this other one is for phase two, right, George?
Phase two, yes, sir.
And that was 25,000, 26,000 for the county match?
Yes, sir. County match, 25, and total cost is 129.
Any questions?
You already had the match money? Where's the match money coming from? Now, it's my understanding out of general fund. Is that right, Kendall?
Yes, sir, that's correct. It's coming out of general fund.
Any other questions, comments? Three and four will be on next agenda.
Susan Kennedy is here to answer questions about the resolution to obligate funding to the Pike Road Volunteer Fire Authority to mitigate the negative impact of the pandemic.
Good morning, y'all. This is Terry's resolution and she is on the Zoom, so if I need to tag out, I may ask Terry to come in. But this is the, there was a half a million dollar allocation from the Thrive Fund for the city and a half a million dollar allocation from the county for emergency services in, out in the county. And so this is how, we met with Pike Road and the folks that service emergency services out in the county and these are the recommendations that they had. One, that we fund the volunteer fire departments that respond to emergency situations out in the county. And the second is to purchase an emergency vehicle to service the county. So that's what this resolution would do. It's asking you to actually obligate those funds for those two purposes.
Has the city already done that?
The city is executing an inter-local agreement. The county will receive their money and the county will spend this money on the emergency services. So they're, yes, they've already agreed and have an agreement to transfer the half a million dollars of their Thrive Funds over to the county.
Oh, they've already?
I don't know that it's been executed because sometimes I can't see inside that black box.
I was about to say, so yeah.
But as soon, but I'm gonna check on that today to make sure, but they, there is no, in my understanding, there's no problem with them sending their half million over here.
I think Terry says it's on agenda tonight.
I think it is, yeah.
And so then that money will be split among the rural areas that we all three have.
That's correct.
Okay.
It will cover the unincorporated area or the non-city areas that, for emergency services.
Okay, so Pike Road gets 450, but the other amount coming will be split among your areas?
No, Susan, can I jump in?
Please, please.
So the portion that goes to Pike Road will cover those blue areas in the math that you all received yesterday. And then the remaining portions, there will be an invitation to bid to get a private emergency transport service in to cover the remaining portions of the unincorporated areas of the county. So that will, it would not be by the other volunteer fire departments, it would be, you know, a company like potentially a Haynes or anyone else that responds that has the capacity to service the other parts of the unincorporated areas of the county. Unfortunately, for the other volunteer fire departments to do that, it would require purchases of additional emergency transport vehicles that there's just not funding there to do nor the manpower to do. So we would have to bring in a private transport provider. But with this allocation, the end goal would be to service the entirety of the unincorporated areas of the county. And then Commissioner Ziegler, any funds that are left over after Pike Road, its component and the private transport service does its component, will be divided amongst the volunteer fire departments, the remaining volunteer fire departments. And we've been talking with the Association of Volunteer Firefighters for the county and they are good with this plan as well.
So the goal is to have ambulance service out of the volunteer fire department at Pike Road and also out of Snowdon again. We used to have it at Snowdon.
Right.
But Haynes had to do the funding, they had to close or not operate out of Snowdon like they had in the past. In the same way with Pike Road.
Okay.
So these, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
These areas that's listed here, Wall, Mount Mex, Mary, Pike Road, Cecil, McDade, Matthews, and Roland Hills, all of those areas are gonna be covered by these emergency services, I would suspect.
Yeah, it'll be covered.
By Pike Road Volunteer Fire Authority.
Yes, it'll be covered by the Pike Road. And also Pike Road would expand out if there's a call outside those areas too. They're not gonna have boundaries. Same thing with the one that's gonna be in South Montgomery, the Snowdon area, they would cover all of South Montgomery and would cover into the city limits of Montgomery and the Pike Road. They would just answer the calls. It just allows us to have more, actually two more, you know, emergency vehicles that can transport, because right now the volunteer fire department cannot transport anybody. So if there was an accident, say down on 331 at Ada or something, the volunteer fire department can respond, but they, Haynes or Care or one of the ambulance services are the ones that can transport. So we have nobody to transport right now.
Does this vehicle allow for, what is the special about this vehicle that we're talking about?
It's actually a used vehicle, in my understanding.
Fire truck, eh?
It's an ambulance.
It's ambulance.
And do we have an agreement, a written agreement with Pike Road that they will actually cover these areas listed in this resolution?
Yes. That's all been done.
So Chairman, let me clarify, you're saying this additional, much-needed service in the county proper, in the unincorporated and in Pike Road, you're saying at any given time that service could be pulled into the city of Montgomery if needed?
Well, it could be if it's on the boundary. I mean, it's not a, they're not gonna stop on the line, the city limits line. They would come in, just like Haynes now operates out of the city of Montgomery, but there's a call, if there's an accident today down Troy Highway or down in South Montgomery on 331, the ambulance is being dispatched from basically Oak Park. So it's just gonna allow us to get better coverage.
Okay.
We used to have coverage in Snowdon, we used to have a vehicle in Snowdon, ambulance. Haynes had that and they had to stop doing it because they didn't have enough runs, they need five runs, they're averaging about three, so they had to cut back.
No, it's been a longstanding issue, ambulance service has. I just want to make sure our people in the county proper are gonna get the coverage that they need with this new service and that it won't be kind of swallowed up in the many needs of the big population of the city.
No, it will not be.
Okay.
And so one addition thing, Mr. Chairman, you said this is a used vehicle?
My understanding, I think it is. I'm not sure if they're gonna do a new or used.
So have?
No, I can answer that for you. So this is for the purchase of a new emergency service vehicle? They already have funds to purchase a used vehicle, all right? And so this is gonna give them more capacity. And then Commissioner Sankey, in the agreement, and I think you guys may have a copy of that, we have them providing you guys with regular updates on their timeline for actually starting this service. So they do have some funding in place to get a used vehicle so that they can start the service sooner. The order time on new vehicles is anywhere from 18 months to two and a half years. And so I know you guys don't want to wait that long and so they will have used vehicles that they have already made arrangements to purchase and get in-house so they can start these services, the transport services, as soon as possible.
Yeah, so Pike Road, you're right, Terry, and Commissioner Sankey, I was a little bit vague on that. You are right, there will be two vehicles operating out of the Pike Road Volunteer Fire Department. That one they're gonna provide, which is a used vehicle, and then this money here will be used to buy the new one.
Terry, have you all looked into FEMA Firefighters Fund to see if we can have some supplements to go along with these proposed funds here?
Commissioner, not necessarily for this particular project, but I am familiar with funding out of FEMA and HHS that could be used to supplement fire services like this. And so I do think that, you know, in the future, if that's something that the county wants to collaborate with Pike Road Volunteer Fire to expand and maintain those services, there are federal funds out there that could support that, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you. Thank Terry.
Thank you, Terry. Hope you feel better. That'll be next agenda.
While we're on the subject of ARPA, Kendall has some updates on the ARPA trails money.
Good morning. The Trails Committee comprised of city and county personnel as well as the River Region Trails leader, Mr. Will O'Connor, we've been meeting for the last couple of months and we have come up with, what you have in front of you on the one pager, has four projects that we are looking to use for the trails funding. And these are all what we're calling kind of the big projects that will be projects that will spur economic development, movement among people. Of course, the second one is the Salmon of Montgomery Trail and the city just got a grant and we're still working to find out some more information about what is in that grant, but we do feel like, one, there may be some opportunity to further expand that trail as it comes downtown, or two, that these funds that will go, these funds can go toward another project, as you fully aware, in that plan that River Region Trails did with Alta Consulting Group detailed a number of projects that can happen. So these projects, in the split of that $5 million, these are going to be projects that are all going to be, these funds are gonna go towards design and engineering. And then, like the city has done, we will then go towards a bigger grant to actually do the construction. So that is the goal that we're achieving with trying to achieve with this $5 million. Does anybody have any questions about the totality or any specific project?
Acquisition, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner. Did I hear you?
Oh, no, I just, is this 2.5 from the county and 2.5 from the city?
Yes, sir. Acquisition and design, Commissioner Sankey?
I was just concerned primarily about acquisition for Jackson Cut and Cypress Nature Preserve. I could just have the notes that somebody owns it. So who owns this Jackson Cut and this Cypress Nature's Trail?
So Jackson Cut is a rails-to-trails project. There are several landowners among Jackson Cut and there's a lot of legalities that's going to have to be decided among that. As it relates to Cypress Nature Preserve, there are really only three landowners. Two of those landowners are negotiating to give the land. The other landowner is where North Gate Apartments currently are, which there's negotiation to acquire that land and then the city would bulldoze North Gate and that would be your entrance.
They should just take that from him, the way he's let that go down.
Well, we not gonna say take.
Oh.
Kendall, Kendall, I just want to thank you and this committee for staying on top of this. I'm a big advocate for these trails, looking nationally, the impact. It's hard to see on this side of it for some, but the impact of this is going to be significant, not just for our goal that we talk about a lot, recruiting and retaining millennials and Gen Z, but also to refocus on getting outdoors, health and wellness. This is exciting. And, you know, the riverfront, it's exciting to see in the last few years, the connectivity from Whitewater, Montgomery Whitewater, all the way to the Capital Oyster Bar is quickly becoming a reality. That was something even, you know, even three years ago, I thought, man, that's never gonna happen, but it's happening and it's so exciting. And especially with the addition of the EJI Sculpture Park, that was a huge piece of it. But this is exciting. Thank you for your diligence and staying on top of this and keeping us informed. This is important.
No problem. The Riverfront Greenway, just kind of expand on that, that does have several pieces. This piece is trying to figure out how to get people across the Interstate 65 Bridge safely. There are some other elements and, you know, to your point, Commissioner Walker, there are other departments in the city that have kind of been working on the Shady Street part, the going toward the Sculpture Garden, how to make that connection. We're really trying to figure out, if you want to leave, if you want to come from downtown and go to Whitewater and you want to walk or you want to bike, how do we safely get people there? So that's something that we're looking at. That's why design and construction is very important and that's why we're, we have to get designs and concepts so we can go to ALDOT to get a yes, or if you change it to this, we can. we have to get designs and concepts so we can go to ALDOT to get a yes, or if you change it to this, we can accept it so that we can do some, potentially do some work on the bridge to make that a reality.
Successful cities have trails.
Yes.
I, I mean, I'm, I can get excited about all these trails except that last one. You know, I, I just don't see myself walking through there. Maybe somebody will.
I hiked through Cypress Nature Preserve in two thousand and eleven. It's fascinating. And it's right, it's just in downtown Montgomery and it is unbelievable that it's right there in downtown Montgomery. Yeah, there were, there were some things going on.
For the additional funding, Mr. Anderson, I'm happy to see that raised grants are in that, in that list. Because we have a lot of, lot of money get away while we were in the process of planning. And so have you all identified a specific dollar amount in raised funding that might be applied to this, these projects?
Uh, no, sir, because we don't know, we don't write, we don't know how much everything is going to cost. I mean, we, we could apply and we could ask for a grand amount, but if we, we need to be very specific about our ask. And we need to make sure that what we ask for is accurate. And, you know, of course, even though we'll get an estimate, an estimate still have to go out to bid. And we could still be, you know, we hope that we would have more than enough money. We want to make sure that we're not asking for fifty million dollars when twenty-five is the number. And with all of these, it's important for us to be as competitive. So that's why we need to do the design to make sure we have concepts that show that we've put in the work to, to show what this will potentially look like. Because it's easy to paint a picture when you're using words, but it's better if you have pictures to paint the picture. So yes, sir, we, we'll work toward an amount that will come out of these design and engineering.
I, I think as Terry and Susan have said all along, this is the kind of opportunity where we can take this ARPA money and leverage it into additional funds, but without the, the planning that needs to be done in advance, we, we're not going to be competitive with any of those kinds of grants.
Wasn't the thirty-six million dollar, was that what was awarded?
Yes, sir. We're, we're, and there was a breakdown that we saw, I saw it this morning. And there are a lot of activities that are going to occur. And like I said, we're still working with the city to get the specifics, but based on the activities that I saw in the article, those activities were going to occur from the overpass at sixty-five on Fairview, around on Fairview, turning into Mobile Highway, all around to the Boulevard. So, you know, you still have the piece that comes from downtown to meet at Fairview. And so I think that's a piece that in terms of community, really could do some, some good work. So that's why we want to kind of hold the Seven of Montgomery, one million dollars right there for right now, until we get a little bit more information about what's going to be in the grant that the city received.
I mean, I, I, I think that's a good idea because we, we put that there because we, we didn't know about thirty-six million. Now that we know we've got thirty-six million, I mean, thirty-six million can go a long way on that trail. And, and I think primarily from what I understand and what I've been hearing, the area you're talking about is the area they're going to spend most of the money on. From, from, from say Fairview and Oak to Five Points.
Well, this, I think the grant is going to go from, a lot of the activities, like you're saying, the money is going to be spent on Fairview. Because they're going to do some redesigns. They're going to add in some bike lanes, things like that, on Fairview going around to where it turns into Mobile Highway onto the Boulevard. So I think infrastructure wise, that may be where they spend a lot of their funds. There's also some transit pieces in there. There's also some, some transit pieces to get people where they need to go. So, you know, that's why I said we need to see a breakdown. We originally thought that it was a little bit more focused on, you know, the roadway and sidewalks and things like that. But there are some additional pieces. And so that's why we're, we're working with the city to get a breakdown of what it really looks like and what those costs look like.
I think we really need to do that.
Yes, sir.
Before we, you know, that little million.
Not going to go far.
Thirty-six million. There's, there's, there's some good plans, I think, for, for Oak Street. All the way, all the way, all the way to Five Points, like I said, Mobile Street, Oak Street, all that could really.
Flourish.
It's prime real estate too. Used to be some great neighborhoods over that way. And so they, they could really, really redevelop that. And that would add to Cottage Hills, add to what they're doing in Cottage Hills. And my hope is that they use the money to do that. There's plenty of money spent on that highway out there.
Yes, sir.
I mean, from, from, from other sources, I think. Anyway, they didn't give it to us. They gave it to the city.
Last, future agenda item is a bid award to Signs Now Montgomery to provide and install graphics and lettering on vehicles for the sheriff's office and county commission.
And that was a low bid, not a deal. Okay. That'll be, any questions?
Says that's, the, the winner were a minority firm. Is that really true? I saw the blockchain.
Signs Now, is it? Signs Now, is that Rashad's?
No, that's not. Different person. Signs Now is a minority.
Kippy, what's his last name?
Kippy Page.
No, it's not Kippy. No, no, not Kippy. His name is Kippy something else.
Page.
They must have sold that.
Yeah. He's a good guy. He's a really good guy. All right. That'll be next agenda.
Now we will hear from Ms. Kelly Benson with Baptist Health and Dr. Antonio Sidel with Live Free. He will be participating virtually.
Hey, good morning. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak. I'm Kelly Benson. I am from Baptist Health. I'm the AVP of case management. Been a nurse for twenty-five years. Our community has been offered a grant of two million dollars to participate in a program for hospital-linked violence intervention. As a case manager, I've been in case management for about ten years. And what I have noticed in, in case management is that the, the patients that we have seen for trauma patients have really changed over the last decade. We used to see those patients that would come in and, you know, it was your full, full grown adults. That, you don't see that anymore. I mean, these are children, babies that are coming in, you know, thirteen, fourteen year old kids. As a case manager, our role at the hospital, once we get them through that life, you know, threatening state, it's time for discharge. So my immediate need is to try to get IV antibiotics. We try to set them up for rehab placement if they need physical therapy, if they now need some type of assisted device, walker, wheelchair, things like that. That's immediate needs. But in the back of my mind, as I discharge this patient out of the front door of the hospital, there's always that part of me as a caregiver that I know, what am I discharging them back into? You're discharging them back into a lot of times the same scenario to where in a couple of months, there's a good possibility you're going to see that revolving door and they're going to be right back in that ER. And oftentimes, the second go around is fatal. Baptist South seen over two thousand trauma patients in two thousand and twenty-three. Five hundred and sixty of those were potential gunshot wounds. The patients that we have seen that come through other programs, through the hospital violence programs, really have a second chance. It's almost like they're changing these victims' trajectory in life. The grant has a potential to offer resources that I don't feel like we've ever been able to offer these patients before. We're not the only one that in the state that has been offered this opportunity. UAB actually has the same thing. They have started their program. They are already seeing success stories. So just from a hospital standpoint, you know, I urge you to, you know, listen to the gentleman that we have coming up next. It sounds like that he has done this in the past, you know, throughout the country. And so it, it's definitely an opportunity I think we need to jump on. And I'm, I'm excited to see that we have these type of resources coming to our community. So. Any questions for me?
Did I hear you say you had a two million dollar grant? Is this the hospital that?
That's us.
Oh, oh.
That's what we're doing.
I thought, man, that she said she got two million dollars from some.
I'm just writing checks today.
You're supposed to say you're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, Dr. Sidel, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, will join us.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. I'm Dr. Antonio Sidel. I'm not sure if, let me put on my camera. I was told you wouldn't be able to see me. Can you see me now? All right. Well, can you hear me? How about that?
Limb Charlie.
Okay, excellent. You're seeing, okay. There's also a, a one pager that I thought was going to be distributed. I'm not sure if you received that. It's called City of Montgomery CVI Program Design.
We got it.
Beautiful. Beautiful. So, so again, I'm Dr. Antonio Sidel. I'm also here with Marcus McAllister, my colleague. We are from Live Free USA. And we do violence prevention work with cities all over the country, as was mentioned. So we were happy to be there a few weeks ago. I'm based in Orlando, Florida. Marcus is in Chicago. And we were happy to be there in person in the city of Montgomery. Got a chance to present to, to some of the city council folks, law enforcement, community members. So we're going to try to distill an hour-long presentation into five minutes. So bear with us. So if you can maybe show hands, how many of you are aware of or have heard of community violence intervention?
We've heard a lot about it. Yes, sir. We've heard a lot about it.
Great, okay. So I won't go into all the great details about it. One of the key things that we're going to want to be doing in Montgomery is, as you know, the vast majority of shootings occur with a very small percentage of the population. So in some cities, this can be as little as point one percent. Okay? So in Montgomery, that would be about two hundred people. The issue is that with this two hundred people, they're not usually engaged by social service agencies, by institutions from the government or whatever it is. They're hard to reach. And so the main ways that you reach this population is number one, on the streets. Okay? And to do that, you need individuals who can relate to this population, have similar backgrounds, who can also build relationships with them. So you need a cadre of street interventionists. Now, as was told just a minute ago, a lot of these individuals end up in the hospital. So one of the main ways you, you integrate with them as well is in the hospital ER after someone's been shot. Okay? So if you look at the, at the sheet in front of you, you'll notice there's two main types of intervention, street and hospital. Okay? In addition to that, we offer wraparound services so that the individuals can start to transition their lives. And actually, I'm not, let Marcus just talk for a minute briefly about the process of how you start to transition these individuals from being prone to violence on the street into nonviolent lifestyles.
Sure. Good morning. I'll, I'll be very brief because I know time is, we don't have a lot of time. So good morning to everybody. As Dr. Antonio said, said, my name is Marcus McAllister, work with Live Free USA. And I've worked all over the country in this work. One of the one things that we saw in transitioning violence and getting violence down in other areas, I heard them mention the UAB project. I mean, I worked in Birmingham a little bit early on when we were pushing for ARPA dollars to go into CVI. I'm working with Ambassador Rice to just really push the ARPA dollars into CVI movement. And a big part of that, as he mentioned, with the street intervention. And I heard the young lady speak about the hospital. I love the term hospital link because the hospital needs to be linked to a community-based group that is doing the work in the community. And as Dr. Antonio stated, these are individuals that are from, they would need to be from Montgomery, be from the communities that we want to do the intervention in or, or apply this implementation project. And then these are individuals, as Dr. Antonio stated, that so many of them from lived experience. And it's really based off of having relationships. We, we do a forty-hour training and we have more forty-hour training. We do training after training boosters continually to ensure staff that are hired are equipped and ready to understand what that process looked like, what mediation protocol, protocols are. Lastly, I'll say, I'll say part of it is I always ask the question, and I asked it when I was there recently with Dr. Antonio, do people, and I would say to this chamber, do people believe that disrespect can get you killed in these neighborhoods that we're talking about that are disproportionately affected? And the majority of those, when I asked that question, law enforcement included, would raise their hand and say yes. And so then my next question is, is disrespect against the law? And I really don't get any hands for that because I haven't really been to a city where just, you know, playing out some, something as simple as disrespecting somebody on social media, something that may happen in the neighborhood, you know, just where there's words and whatnot, these things are not against the law. So being that they're not against the law and the majority of people agree that these type of instances can lead to someone being killed, that's where, i.e. street intervention plays a major role. Because they kind of, for lack of better words, they police the disrespect. It's, it's well timed served for them to kind of get in people's business and, and to leverage their relationship to be able to diffuse the situation. A lot of times in situations, no one is trying to curb their mind based off of the, the violence, somebody that they're relatable to. And so when you have street interventionists that are from that community that have lived that life, they can, you know, kind of calm that situation down through de-escalation tactics, mediation tactics. And so that's kind of the core of street intervention in a quick nutshell right there. I mean, obviously much more, much more training, but I'm just wanted to throw that part in there about street intervention. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I do have one question. This is two million dollars. Program launch date is July the first, two thousand and twenty-four. How long will that two million dollars last or run?
Yeah. So I'm, I'm going to jump into the budget stuff in, in a, in a minute because it's, it's some important things to, to take note of. So when we're talking about Montgomery, so just, just to give a little bit of scope of the issue of Montgomery specifically, there's been a ninety-two percent increase in homicides over the last five years. And so it's clearly on an uptick. And so as mentioned, when we're talking about trying to intervene with the highest risk individuals, if we just assume that there's two hundred of them in, in Montgomery, which we would need more data to know, a more precise number, you would want to typically spend about six million dollars a year. Now, the, the math we've done so far, based on what we understand the funding to be is there's two million dollars, which I believe is combined city and county money that, I think that might be the ARPA dollars, which it sounds like might be separate money than, than what was mentioned just a little bit earlier, but I'd want to get clarity on that. There's about one point six million that the city has allocated as well. And currently, the city's Office for Violence Prevention is spending, are close to four hundred thousand dollars a year. Now, most of that money is over three years though. So that gives us a, a total budget of a little over one point six million. So to, to answer your question more succinctly, the two million is over three years, which is, which is not a lot of money, but enough to get at least an initial program off the ground.
And then like, after the three years is over and ARPA money runs out, are there any means for funding this? Any grants or anything that can keep it going?
Yep. So there's, there's different ways to fund this. So there are federal grants that are available. And, and I would encourage this, I think it'll be a new RFP coming out soon for federal grants, which the city can apply for, the county can apply for. And that will be helpful. But it won't be enough to cover the full scope of the program. So our recommendation is always a combination of funding sources, city sources, county sources, the federal grant program. Public Health Department often will provide additional funding, has been done in other places. So trying to coordinate all those funds in order to get to a targeted amount, I think is, is probably the best strategy.
Any other questions?
Ms. Jim?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I was just curious as to whether or not you have come across in the studies in your work that suggest that the built environment might contribute to some of this community violence, like the boarded up abandoned homes, the empty storefronts and other social determinants of health. Have you all? Have you all come across in the studies or been engaged in the studies where the environment itself might have some cause, uh, to, some cause of the relationship to this violence?
Yes, absolutely, I mean, all those factors definitely, uh, definitely impact. So I, I'm a, I'm a former teacher and high school principal and deputy superintendent of schools, and in addition to those things, I will always want investment in after-school programs and summer jobs and all those types of things. So all those things are necessary, and you've got to have a specific intervention for this small population at the same time. So doing those, those other things are, are definitely helpful, but I would, I would call it a, uh, um, in addition to a, a supplementary piece. I think Marcus wanted to jump, jump in as well.
Yeah, I really appreciate that question. So yes, uh, those things, we call it environmental design. Philadelphia is one case where they really cleaned up a street and abandoned buildings and, and utilized that to drive down the violence. But as Dr. Antonio mentioned, I would call those as an addition. Um, and the, and the reason I say that, because today, we just, uh, when Dr. Antonio was a part of it, we just launched, um, a CBI Leadership Academy at the University of Chicago, where I humbly serve as their dean of students and also adjunct professor there. But one of the things we talked about, we talk about an ecosystem, and that's what most cities are in the process of building out when it comes to violence intervention. So yes, we need hospital, yes, we need street intervention, but yes, you need some environmental design, you need some school programs, you need even a re-entry program. There's a, a variety of what we call, ones that just makes the process of getting the violence down much better. But if I had to hedge my bet on which of the strongest pieces, and that's having people directly in the community that have those relationships, and obviously having that addition of a lot of hospital-linked, um, to serve in that capacity as well to, to decrease that violence. But yes, we have saw it, I use Philadelphia as an example, uh, but many of the cities are starting to add that into their CBI ecosystems proposed.
I appreciate, you got, you got another question, Dan.
Yeah, yeah, I noticed that, uh, according to the Department of Justice, we can expect, or these programs are likely to achieve a 30 to 60% reduction, in shootings and homicides and things of that nature. What, 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 uh, do, has this program been in effect long enough, to say, uh, a city or an area that's comparable to, uh, Montgomery, that we can get some kind of indication, and what, what we can expect, and how long would it take to, uh, achieve that expectation?
Yeah, so there's, yeah, there, there's a couple decades of research and evaluations on, on these programs in all kinds of cities. The, the biggest challenge is longevity, because cities will sometimes launch something and then funding goes away, or they shift focus or whatever, and then, you know, it, it starts to unravel. But so I'm, I'm in Orlando, and we just, uh, launched one of these programs, uh, a, a little over a year ago. Just in the first year, we've seen a, a 36% reduction in injury shootings in the city, okay? So if you sustain these over years, then you get bigger and bigger reductions, right? So in, in the city of Oakland, California, for example, about 400,000 people, they had six straight years of year-over-year reductions, um, and got some historic lows. And, uh, and more recently, the city did an audit, because the, the numbers went back up during COVID and haven't gone back down, and they were trying to figure out what happened. And what they discovered with the program audit is that the city had begun to let go of some of the key management practices that they were using in order to, to monitor the work. They shifted resources away from it, um, and, and it just kind of unraveled. So you got to keep this up as, as really kind of an institutionalized, uh, supplement to what you're doing in order to, to keep the shootings down.
So we, with the 2 million, by the time we've spent it, we should be able to see, to see some improvement, uh, in the numbers, or, or, you know, make a determination as to whether or not it's worth going forward with. Because that's my, my, my real question, I mean, it's a, it's a difficult issue, a difficult problem, and, and, uh, I, I, I don't know. Well, I, I, I understand and, and know that in order to address the issue, you're going to have to have people that are, are really trained in the areas that, 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 uh, that, that can be effective, uh, in reaching these people. Not everybody, not even former gang members can sit down with somebody and talk them out of violence. That, that takes a certain level of training, uh, uh, in that, in, in order to be able to do that. And I just don't know that we have that right now, uh, to start with. Uh, I'd like to be sure that we have that, so that at the end of the day, when we spent the 2 million, we can actually, uh, look at the numbers and see if it, it was effective or not, and, 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 you know, I'd like to make sure that we're ready to do that.
Are you? Absolutely, just to answer your, your, your question, really, so that, that's what Marcus and I are for. So the city has contracted with Live Free to provide training and technical assistance. And so the steps we take is the first process is we help identify and, and screen applicants who want to serve as street and hospital interventionists, and then provide intensive training. Marcus was talking about, you know, the initial 40 hours of training, then there's follow-up trainings. Throughout the year, we provide ongoing training, coaching, uh, support services. Because you're right, you have to be well-trained, just because you're from the neighborhood doesn't mean you know how to, how to, uh, mediate conflicts and reduce violence. So training and technical assistance is a critical part of this. To the point about monitoring results, that is also critical. One of the key things that's going to be necessary in order to be effective is to be getting good data, particularly from law enforcement in terms of the ongoing shootings. So one of the things that we do is a, a careful analysis of the last five years of shootings by month, right, and disaggregate it even by neighborhood, if that's possible, right? And then, once the, once the, uh, intervention gets going, getting daily shooting data from law enforcement. And so we train the folks to be able to do careful data analysis, to look each day, oh, there was a shooting here, there's a shooting here, what patterns are we seeing? How can we prevent retaliatory violence, right? And so that data piece is going to be critical, not only to inform the strategy, but to your point, to monitor effectiveness over time.
Hey, I apologize for interrupting you, but we're very pressed on time. Um, but I do appreciate both of y'all being on here today.
Great, well, thank you for your time.
You've been helpful, thank you.
Florence, we got three more items.
Item number seven is a board member appointment to the Industrial Development Board of the City of Montgomery.
I'm still working that, uh, uh, I'll have something hopefully, uh, at our next meeting.
Can we go ahead and, uh, maybe put on next agenda to approve? Jerry Kaiser wants to be approved back on there, Kim, since his term's going to expire tomorrow, two days from now.
Yeah, he's not the one that I'm trying to.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
But we can go ahead and do Kaiser. Yeah, let's do it, and hopefully Commissioner Harris will have somebody we may just add him to at the same time.
I'll have somebody by our next meeting.
So let's, you know, put that on there to.
Item number eight is a reappointment of Trey Trussell as a board member of the Pine Level Water Authority.
That'd be next agenda.
Item number nine is consideration of an appointment of a board member to the Montgomery County Community Cooperative District.
Everybody should have gotten an email, uh, with a recommendation from Chairman Sanders from the Cooperative District Board on recommendation of Mr. Jenkins, is that correct?
Is it Jenkins?
It is Jenkins.
Jenkins, I do not know him, but he comes highly recommended. Some of y'all may know him, I do not know him.
I thought he was related to Mike, uh, Jenkins, uh, the late Michael, Mike Jenkins, but no, no relation, as I understand it, but it did come highly recommended. I, I have to, uh, I have to defer to, uh, Leslie's, uh, recommendation and judgment, I.
So that'd be next agenda then.
She needs all the help she can in, uh, tracking the numbers, and I think he's a numbers guy.
He's numbers, yeah, that's what we need on there to replace Mr. Buckaloo, so. All right, is that it, Florence?
Yes, sir.
All right, it's 10 o'clock, we're going to take about a, a, a five-minute, strict five minutes, we're going to start at 10:05.